Okay, good evening. I call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel fourteen. And a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who's making our recording this evening? Okay. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k twelve dot ma dot us. Do we have any public comments? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, so no public comment this evening. Moving on. I'm sure the thing that we all would like to hear about are COVID updates by the health inspector.
Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so let me share a screen. I think that's the best way to do it, tell you, give you a little update. Okay, well, can you enable it, please?
That's it.
Thank you. Sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. So you guys seeing the screen, okay?
Yes.
All right, so, so you can see in the far right is our last, is our last more recent case count. So you can see, you know, in late, right around late, mid to late July is Delta sort of taken over. You could see that we started to tick up from what we saw in June into that sort of thirty a week for about, with twenty a week, so, or so, for about five weeks. We had an increase, a big increase, threefold of two, two weeks or so, and the trend, the yellow one indicates where we are this week. This is data has taken off around Thursday afternoon. To be consistent, I kind of cut it off right around the same time. And so we're sort of in that pattern now. You know, unfortunately, it's the same time when school starts of an increase in cases. I'll talk a little bit more about, you know, cases in general in a second. So our case count currently today is eighteen fifty-eight. I thought maybe you'd find this interesting. Since August first, the average age has been forty-four. Since the first of the year, it's been forty-three. So there hasn't been a lot of movement necessarily in age. And I just happened to think maybe you'd find it interesting. I went back to the last hundred cases, seventeen were of school age. I don't know whether that's a trend, if that's high or low. I didn't have a chance to really dig into it. I just thought you might find it interesting. So, yeah, definitely I've seen an increase. When I get into, let me click on the next slide, which is going to show you what the, the rest of our peers are doing over in, on the Cape. We're sort of in the middle. We usually are in the middle to the better half of incidence rate. Incidence rate just tells you how many cases per day per hundred thousand. So Falmouth being twenty point six, since we're about a third of a hundred thousand, means about seven or eight cases per day at the time at which this was taken. The snapshot does include a little bit of the better week that we had a couple of weeks back. It's a little bit of a delay to it. This number will go up, will go up a bit because it'll take both the two sixty weeks and probably put us in the mid twenties. So our incidence rate is there. Our rest of our peers are sort of, some are less, some are more. It looks like Sandwich is higher and Barstool and a few towns. The entire county, all of Massachusetts is twenty-one point one. So that's kind of where we are with our peers, at least incidence rate. Incidence rate just means a number of daily cases. Our metrics for transmission, the things that we look at, you know, this is, comes from the CDC. What, what, when do we need to do more mitigation in terms of sort of the general population, not necessarily school specific? Our incidence rates moved into the moderate the last couple of weeks. It's been a seven, seven point eight per hundred thousand increase. So a couple of cases per day. The orange line just indicates when the CDC recommends more mitigation, such as mask mandates and so forth. Our positivity is up, but still in the low end. The number of tests has definitely increased within around eleven, twelve hundred, somewhere around there, weekly tests are being performed. Part of that is because we have a lot of healthcare and some of these long-term care assisted facilities are going back to the weekly testing of staff, and that tends to drive that number up. Hospitalizations, this is the most recent one. This is the twelfth. We had six people in the hospital in Falmouth. That's a bit higher than what we've seen. It's not where they're at surge capacity or they're, you know, at a point where you're seeing on the news that some of the states are having a large issue. So our hospitalization remains fairly good considering the caseload. And when we talk about vaccines, we know that the vaccine with Delta doesn't necessarily cause, you know, it does cause, allow for breakthrough, but it's, it's highly effective where it really matters with hospitalizations and deaths. So we're seeing more cases, we're testing more for it. We're finding more. But by and large, the cases themselves are generally on the mild side for those that have been vaxxed. It's not so much for those who decided not to be vaxxed. In terms of our total, I'll talk about school age population in a second, but our, our total vaccination for those eligible down on the bottom left, right, for all eligible people in Falmouth, twelve or older, we're at seventy-nine point six. I feel like I should just round that up to eighty because that's a good number, but we're eighty percent fully vaccinated among eligible people. So eight out of every ten has been, or eighty out of a hundred, they've been fully vaccinated that are eligible. In terms of our testing, we're averaging, last week we had about three hundred and twenty, so three hundred and something doses administered. We're at two oh eight now for that particular week. Coming over here, I wanted to show you this. In terms of, this is the way the state gives me the data. I can't break it down any further. But between the ages of twelve and nineteen, we're sixty-seven percent fully vaxxed. And so that's two out of every three have decided to take, either the parents decide or the child decided, whatever, to become vaccinated. So that number, we're seeing some gains in there and, you know, of course, as, as needed, we can, we can run clinics. If, if you're deciding now and you're watching it on TV, let me stop sharing. I want people to keep in mind though, once, once the rollout occurs for boosters, there's going to be a crunch on it. You know, if you guys remember, remember the spring and how the crunch looked then. If you're on the fence now, now would be a great time to do it because I think the, it needs initially, there's going to be a push for vaccine. And the push will obviously make somewhat scarce, you know, maybe initially or not. I don't know. The state hasn't, you know, told me us completely how it's going to happen. There's not going to be mass vac sites. So I think the towns, I think, you know, myself, the VNA, Barstool County will be doing a larger share this time around for the boosters. So I think if there's, if you've been on the fence and you're just sort of waiting and, you know, you may find that sometime in the October, November range, it's just going to, it might be a little bit tougher just because there'll be more demand. It'll be opened up to more people for a booster. So that's what I have for an update. So I think questions are always the best way to go.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Scott? Seeing none. So Lori, Lori's update is going to have a lot of information about what the schools particularly are doing for COVID. So we're actually going to move the agenda around so that Scott and Lori can kind of have a collaborative conversation around COVID in our schools.
Oh, and Dr. Peters. Yes, yes, I only have one quick question. So the difference, is it all worrisome to you, the difference between the fully vaxxed and the one dose? That gap, is that, is that a pretty normal sized gap between, you know, basically I'm wondering, should we be concerned that people aren't following up and getting their second dose?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like if I went back, I'm looking at the slide right now. It's about seven percent. It's been pretty consistent throughout that about seven, six to seven percent in every age group don't seem to come back for their second dose. Because if you got J and J, you go into the fully vaxxed automatically after your first dose. So, so, yeah, it's, it's been seven percent all along. And we do, when I, when I go through, one of the nice things about, I run a report every day off of Maven, which is our, where all the cases go to be contact traced, is that, you know, I can look at their vaccination status and we do see a fair amount of those people that didn't get the second dose. Well, it's because we're also seeing people fully vaccinated showing through breakthrough. Definitely you see probably a higher percentage, obviously, among those that just decided to get one dose for whatever reason.
So, so can I ask a follow-up? So I would imagine that people who may have waited quite a long time, maybe they got vaccinated in the spring and then they, they waited a long time and maybe now think that they need to restart their series. Is that true? Or can they just jump in and get a second dose at any point? And if it's not that three week?
I think they, I think they could get a second dose. I think there's going to be, I think if you look at what the UK did, the UK, they gave everybody a first dose and then we went later, a month later. And I think, I think, this is again, I'm not, I'm not the CDC. I think that's a pretty effective thing. I think one of the things that we're looking at is was the twenty-one days and the twenty-eight days, depending whether you got Moderna or Pfizer. Was that the best spread? Should it be longer? So I think, yeah, I think you should still get your second shot and then actually, maybe in a year or so, we decide that that's a better way to go. I mean, I just, there's a lot of discussions on whether you want to do it that quickly or not. So there may be some changes that would come down the line. It might actually, you know, be better. I'm not better off, but you know, you might definitely would get the second dose now. The third, the booster should be at least twenty-eight days from, and you've heard also eight months. I mean, the CDC recommendation, you have to be at least twenty-eight days from your, your full dose. There's also been study, you know, people, the CDC's come back with, you know, should wait eight months. You hear that as well. From the state, we don't have any guidance. They're still working on exactly what they're going to want to do with the booster. I hope that answered your question.
That does. Thank you so much. I just want to make sure that the message is out there that it's not too late to get your second dose. Even if you, if you didn't meet the timeline that was set up at the beginning. So, and you definitely answered that. Thanks so much, Scott.
That's how the Brits did it.
That was good information. So any other questions for Scott before we turn over to Lori, just for her COVID and school update?
None? Okay, Lori. Okay, so we're, we just finished day five of being back into school. And we knew with COVID and the roots in town that we were likely to have positives. So, so far, we have nine total in-school positive cases where contact tracing was necessary. When, the way the contact tracing's working this year is that we first look at all the students that are vaccinated. And then they have one set of rules, you know, in school, wear a mask like everyone else. Otherwise, there's, they're not technically quarantined, but we look at that. We, the second group of students, we look if they've had consent for test and stay. And the test and stay protocol is that they get tested on the, the day that they're identified as a quarantine or as a close contact and then, and then five days after, over a seven day period. So even if the weekend hits and they may have to pick up those tests on the Monday or so after. And then after the test and say, then we have those that do not consent to test and say, and those that are quarantine students. And out of the nine total in-school positives, we have only had to quarantine ten students. So everyone else is in school. So right now, because it's in the beginning of school, we don't have everybody's consent for test and stage right now, nor do we have everyone's information as to whether students and or staff are actually vaccinated. So as our contact tracers and our nurse, Nurse Lori and our public health nurses and our other nurses, when we identify all those that are close contacts, then they have to start calling and finding out. And so we are finding out more, more people are vaccinated. So they can go on that. We find out people that haven't consented, but we talk about the test and say, and they have consented. And then those that don't consent, and that's where we've come with, up with ten students that are now in quarantine. So and we're doing that, you know, the testing every day. So it's a new routine. It's the very beginning of school and it's a lot of paperwork. A lot of, a lot of hours making the phone calls to, I, I can see that that will get better. You know, once we have the information, but I really encourage all of our students and staff to to report to us as to whether they are vaccinated. Right now, we have sixty-five percent of our staff reported as vaccinated. And it's just too soon to even guess about our students because we're just, we're just finding out. And the staff are reporting right to Nurse Jen, but a lot of the students are reporting the information to the nurses. And then it has to get, you know, in, you know, the, the document with Jen. So right now, a lot of students are coming in, sharing that information with the nurses. It's just not logged in to the system yet. So I just, I, I don't want to report that yet. We just need time to catch up. Like I said, it's, it's still early in the school year and, and we're still trying to settle into the new routines, new protocols and our, our new programs like the test and say.
I'm sorry, Lori, did you say sixty-five percent?
Of our staff reported. Record, reported. So even when we're doing the contact tracing in these last few days, we're finding that staff have been vaccinated. They just hadn't got up and shared that yet. So again, just really encouraging. And then I should remind that for all of our students, or students that are twelve years and older and all of our staff that are not vaccinated yet, we have the in-school clinic running that I shared. So next week, next Friday is the first date of the vaccine clinics. So our staff can, if they are not vaccinated, they can come right into school and do that during work time. We'll make sure that they have released, kind of running and get the vaccine. And of course, our stu, it is being held at three of our schools. So the students are already in the school that they're going to be vaccinated with. So that's a quick update right now.
Melissa, start your hand up first. I have a quick question. What's the best way for students and staff to get the, their vaccination status to who it needs to go to? Is it a verbal? Is it written? Is it like a photocopy of their vaccine card?
All three of those. We're taking all of it. So.
So we're taking people's word for it and we're taking however.
Yeah, I mean, our students following up with that. So if you're sending an, a email, that's great. You know, we're logging that. We'll follow up when we, you know, get a chance, but those we would still have to call. Students are coming in with a copy of their card, get, turn it over to their, you know, their nurse in the building. Great way to do that. So you can email a copy of the cards. You could bring a copy of the card in. You could actually just make a phone call and we'll have a discussion about that and, and we can actually follow up and confirm that. So.
And just a quick follow-up question. If they were vaccinated before end of school last year, does that info travel over to this year?
So we. So if they've already told us, we know it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good, that's good.
That is good. Scott.
Yeah, I like to add to it. First thing, just remember that nurses that we're bringing down to do this clinic are going to be the nurses that are going to be doing probably a good chunk of the booster shots. So we're not, you know, we can only pull from who we can pull. So we just can't. What I'm saying is it's easy for us to run the clinics now, but there might be a delay in that sort of October crunch, November crunch to be able to pull in and do it. We probably can't. I just, again, I want to, what's it called? The over-deliver, under-promise it, over-deliver. So you're thinking, if you're thinking about it now, now it's really easy because the nurses are not doing boosters, right? So if we're drawing on, you know, let's say I'm running the fairgrounds Tuesday, Thursday, and we're cranking and we got twelve, twelve staff there. It's, gets a little bit tougher to sort of get into the smaller fine tune. I might be doing something at the senior set. So, you know, let's get a night, if you think, again, if, like I said earlier, if you're thinking about doing it now as parent who's listening now, please sign up for the one on Friday. It just might be, we just can't run one every two weeks if that makes sense to everybody, right? So I just want to say that. The second thing I want to say is parents that have children that are positive through the school should also be getting a PCR. Right now, you know, Desi comes out with guidance about test and stay, but that has to make the Maven system. And there's not really a mechanism set up that the school can report into Maven. So that sort of has to go into the system and what we're asking at this point until Desi, sitting here, Desi, and then you've got DPH runs the Maven and the MIIS and all that fun stuff, has to sort of figure it out. And they're still sort of working at the state level to figure out how that importation of that, of that information makes it into the system. So that, you know, the VNA can do the follow-up, release people from isolation. The schools really shouldn't be releasing isolation. That should come from us. And how does that information, we shouldn't be doing it on phone calls and emails that, you know, Johnny and Suzie here, it's supposed to go into that Maven system, right? So that, how that's going to work out is still sort of, so right now, for this point, you're getting a test of, you know, a PCR test and then that'll import and then we can, we can do it from our end too as well, right? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, you know, for now, I want, I want parents that have positives to get a verification PCR test. It's going to be a lot to ask of, of the individual schools to be reporting them into Maven, you know, even, even convenient MD who does it the vast majority of, of rapid tests here in Falmouth have, have struggle to, because that's the staff member. When it goes to PCR, the lab automatically reports it to DPH. It's easy. But these rapid tests that people are taking, you know, is, 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 that has to be manually entered into it each time. So it's a little bit of a bear. So.
Thank you for that, Leah. Okay, well, I'm going to actually jump first to this. Because this, this does seem like a real burden for families to, like, to have to go get tested after. So this is saying, if there was a positive test at school, that then the family would have to go test this student outside of school?
Subject to, well, right now, because subject to change, I mean, we, we got to get the state to sort of figure out how that's supposed to work. It's just, you know, so if Nurse Jen sends an email to us, it's like it's, you know, we have a contract with the VNA. And Barstool County just got a five hundred thousand dollar grant to hire an epidemiologist. So we are going to have the county level in working with the VNA. But they're really, they're really looking at Maven. Every morning I get up and I look at the system and see where the cases come in. It's, the mechanism hasn't really been figured out at the state level, how it's supposed to work with schools. It's not just Falmouth. It's all the schools. And so maybe I'll know by the end of the day tomorrow how it's all supposed to work. But I'm saying right now, because I don't, I'm just encouraging, I want the parents to get a PCR because the school shouldn't be determining when somebody could be released from isolation. That always comes from us. Right? So that comes from the VNA. What happens is if you're positive, you're getting a call from the VNA, they're going to walk things through with you. They're going to say if you're symptom-free, they'll follow up, make your other phone calls. That's kind of hard to have, that's kind of hard to have that happen at this point with the emails back and forth. It really needs to go into the system. And I think the state is working on the best way to do it, you know, for each schools. And this is true of all, what, you know, three hundred plus jurisdictions out there. So they just got to figure it out exactly how it's going to work for, for our purposes. You know, does that make sense? Right? So, yeah, but parents should be getting, you know, if anybody's got a primary care, if you're using either the community center in Mashpee, or you can go right to Falmouth Hospital through your physician. They can do it order. We've got free testing at the fairgrounds twice a week and we can work on getting, I'm working on getting more days there. So you can go to the fairgrounds and get a test. So, you know, that's where we're at now. And if, and all, any parent that's struggling maybe to find that, you can call the health department. My nurse Kathy can, can walk them through what's, where to go on that too.
If families don't have transportation.
Well, yeah, I don't know if, if they don't have transportation, then I will have to work something out. I don't, I don't know what that, that's going to look like at this point. But what's going to happen is, is then the, the school and I would have to do emails back and forth. It's just not going to, it's just not going to hit the system. You know, we'll have to work through how that's going to work in terms of that. But technically, I'm the one, not me, but the health department in the contract with the VNA would be releasing you. If we have to do it manually, we can do it manually. But it's ideally, it should, it should go into, all cases should be imported into Maven. They're supposed to be. And how that's going to all work, it's still being worked out between DPH and Desi, you know, how that's going to flow.
And Scott, you generously offered that the public could call the health office. If they have any questions, could you share that phone number, please?
Yeah, five oh eight, four nine five, seven four eight five is the main line. And, you know, I have, Kathy's here every day. I'm here as well in Mallory. So any one of us can be able to walk you through it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Can I ask my second question?
Yes.
Sorry. So you had said that ten students were quarantined. Do we know how many were actually close contacts? Just thinking about that, how many close contacts there were with nine students? Because you said ten were quarantined of those.
Although I know the total number.
Yeah, just to get a sense of how many.
I don't have it tonight. I don't have it right now. It's.
Just to give us a sense of how many signed up or tested.
Yeah, so all that data is still getting input. It's a lot of input into the system so that, so that I can actually figure those numbers out. So, I mean, our, our nurses are fabulous. They have been working very hard. We're actually looking to find some additional support for them to not only help with the test and stay, but to do, help with the paperwork. So I don't have the total number right now of how many were quarantined.
So that actually was kind of where I was going with this, is the amount of work that's involved with this. And could, could you just, for the public and for me as a parent, kind of get a sense of what, what does it look like the test and stay? So if a student is a close contact and in school, obviously, it's only for kids who are in school. If it was, you know, square outside of school or a family outside of school, it wouldn't be. But if the student was a close contact with someone in school, they come to school the next day, they can take the bus?
Yes.
They can take the bus even though they're a close contact. So they can take the bus, they arrive at school. What does that look like?
They go to a designated area, like the high school. They would go to the auditorium. And then they would wait for their test and say, and then once it's negative, then they go on about their, their day. So if it's a elementary school and it's a entire class, they could stay in their class and have the, the test and say. So different grade levels, how the configurations of the schools kind of dictates. If you, if you're in multiple classes throughout the day, then you would start with a designated area like an auditorium.
So and it's always first thing in the morning?
First thing, right off the bus.
Okay. And there's no precautions on the bus with someone who's a close contact?
Not according to our protocols from Desi. Yeah, as long as the windows are down and everyone's wearing their, their mask on the bus, it's, it's exempt.
Is there a question?
Yeah, well, a question for Dr. Dura and me, for Scott as well. Of the student population that tested positive, is there a particular age group or school level that has seen maybe a bulk of them or are they spread out pretty people?
We have had elementary, we've had Lawrence and the high school. I don't, I mean, the high school's probably leading by one over, but it's a larger school. I mean, I don't, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know. So I don't, I don't think I could say, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we could say that at this point.
Okay.
It's definitely not out of mind.
Unvaccinated age group.
Right.
Vaccinated.
Yeah, I think it'll play out to be the lower grades, obviously, because the vaccination rates, zero for kids under twelve.
Andrea, so some of my questions were similar to Leah, but a little bit different. So for Lori, could you just define, I think for everybody who's listening, what an in-school case looks like? What's the parameters around that, since that is so tightly tied to test and stay?
So if a student is in school, and I need to remind everyone, we don't come to school if you have symptoms. But if a student was starting to feel symptoms during school, they would be tested. And then if they're positive, then we would do the contact tracing for close contacts for that student in the school. So we still strongly recommend that if anyone has symptoms, you know, stay home, follow the traditional protocol.
And then with the contact tracing, I know that you don't have the, the concrete numbers because we're really early into this. But, but what I was just wondering, do you have a sense, because we no longer have distancing and cohorts and all that, is the scope just gotten a lot larger? Or is it comparable to what it was last year?
Good question. I don't know that I could actually answer that right now. At the elementary school, I don't think it's going to be because it's the classroom. I mean, there's still, anytime they would be interacting with other classes, it would be outdoors. We don't contact, trace outdoors. But, and with the, the younger students, you know, we no longer, they're not sitting in dust six feet apart. They are interacting, they're having their groups or their centers. And so it's still look, that part still looks the same. Now that Lawrence is changing classes as well as the high school, I would have to predict that we have more students that, that we're probably going to be contact tracing. I would have to predict that we have more students that, that we're probably going to be contact tracing at Lawrence because we were in cohorts last year. So if there were any change, I would say it's probably there.
Couple more questions. So if a student is in close contact with a positive case in the school, no symptoms, they have the option of testing.
Yes.
Yes.
If a student is in a close contact with a positive outside the school, let's say somebody in their home, do they have that same option?
No. So Desi set the rules for the test and stay. If there's a close contact outside of the school, then they have to follow the traditional protocol. So, I mean, part of that is, well, one would be our capacity of our nurses to be able to test for, you know, for anyone that might be in close contact anywhere. The second would be, I don't think we would have enough test kits probably to cover that. But the, the most important and what Desi says is that schools are controlled environments. And so the program is for controlled environments and we can't control any contacts or such outside of school. And therefore, it's just, you know, more, more challenging, you know, I think would be the way to describe that.
And how long are those kids required to stay out of school until they can, what do they need to do to get back to school?
I, I. Yeah, if you want to do it, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, we, well, so, so that is based on symptom resolution or earlier than, well, generally it's 10 days. It depends on when symptoms resolve, you know, it's gonna be on the individual and the contact tracing if someone's positive. Is that what you're saying, positive, right? So if somebody, somebody's.
To somebody that's positive at their home, how long does that student know?
Well, the quarantine.
The quarantine.
Yeah.
Okay, a quarantine situation would be a minimum of eight days. You'd test on day five, it could be released after, well, seven full days, which means you can come back on the eighth day. Otherwise you might be out by 10 if you take the no testing option. So it's the same for all, everyone. So that's what would happen to me if I had to call, you know, you know, somebody up and into it. So it's your normal sort of quarantine that we've been doing, you know, for a year plus now.
Okay, so second part of that question. If a staff member tests positive with symptoms, what is the procedure before they can return? To work?
The exact same. Oh, yeah, if it's positive symptoms, Scott said it's for everyone. That's the universal quarantine or isolation.
They have to still quarantine for at least eight days? They have to have a negative test before they come back?
No, 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 you don't have to take a negative test, you come back, you'll never come back. It'll take you months because the test is so sensitive, it tends to pick it up. We, we tried that, they tried that early on in 2020 and it just took forever to get people back into. So it, you can still test positive, but not be able to spread it. So they don't use testing, retesting a negative test, PCR test usually to release, it's based on time and symptom resolution.
I'm sorry, so that was for a positive, the quarantine would be the same?
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant for.
I think he did talk about the positive when I was answering the quarantine question. So you're right. And you, you got it, Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Positive.
Yes.
They have symptoms. Is it, is it eight days after they stop having symptoms and it's?
No, it's, it, it, okay, so it's a minimum of 10 days and symptom resolution for at least a day.
Okay.
Can I don't see a test and say.
I'm sorry, what?
Do, can teachers take?
Yes.
The test and say, okay.
But the test and say is only for unvaccinated asymptomatic. Yes, but if that, they fall in that category, yes, they can.
Okay.
When the exposure occurs in school?
When the exposure occurs in school, correct.
They go on vacation for the weekend and they come back and that's no test.
In, in school, so you're wrong.
And are we monitoring our teachers as well? I'm sure we are. And have we had any teachers? Obviously we have 10 students who are in quarantine. Do we have any teachers that are in quarantine at this point?
No, all staff that were considered close contacts were vaccinated.
Yay. Yes, I'm sorry, but that's like really important. The kids can't learn if the teachers aren't there. Um, Leah. I have one more question. So if you are vaccinated, do you, is there an option? Because we have had a lot of breakthrough cases. I mean, maybe not a lot, but we do have breakthrough cases. Is it possible for someone to say they would like to do the test and stay if they were in close contact?
Uh, not according to Desi, Desi's rules around the test and stay program.
Okay, so they can.
There's two parts, just the test and say, uh, and the rules, uh, but it's if you're a close contact and you're unvaccinated and asymptomatic. Or the diagnostic testing, if you have symptoms after you're already at work or school, then you could be tested.
If you're vaccinated.
Yeah, any, yeah, I mean, yeah. Any, if you have symptoms, it's for anybody.
It's just so nuanced.
So Desi did create a flow chart that actually looks pretty good. And we did post it on our website.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
We have that like in every building and like, and like, can we send it home when parents, like in, can we send it home via email and paper? So it's because I feel like it will, it will quiet a lot of noise.
Yeah, we'll make it available. Yes, I will make sure it gets sent out.
There's something I think you can go on the district's, just district's Facebook page or is it something big?
It's pretty big. We do the link to it.
Yeah. Yes, Scott.
Yeah, just, just keep in mind, things are subject to change. I think things will get, things are gonna get tweaked and you'll have to resend stuff out because then parents might have something older. So you just want to make sure that you're swapping them out. I think, I think Desi's gonna have to, you know, everybody's gonna need to revisit DPH and Desi or the guidance and they just, they may be doing some fine tuning and changing. That's all. Things are subject to change at a moment's notice.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that, Scott. Then as a reminder, Desi is going to provide further guidance toward the end of September. Just before that October 1st.
Hopefully earlier than later.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions for, just for the COVID piece, for either Scott or Lori?
Or Dr.
Or Dr. Parkinson. Oh, hello. Or Dr. Parkinson, any other questions before we move on? Scott, as always, thank you so much. And thank you for not only being here, but making yourself available. So thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
You're handling everything so well, but I just wanted to add my voice to the need to get people vaccinated that aren't vaccinated. You know, the, the predominant thing that I've seen this week is of positive cases is people saying, we were just getting ready to get vaccinated. And, you know, the problem is you get, you know, your parent or whoever in your house gets it. And then should you get vaccinated? Because then what if I get sick and I'm vaccinated at the same time and it's all a mess? And so just don't delay, you know, had plenty of time to get our heads around this. And, you know, we know that it works. We know that it doesn't cause infertility. We know that it doesn't cause COVID. We know that people are less likely to be hospitalized and way less likely to have worse things happen if they get vaccinated. And so, you know, 12 and up, please get vaccinated. And as Scott said, do it this week while the vaccine is in plentiful supply.
One, absolutely. It's really, really important for everyone to hear that. So thank you very much, Dr. Parkinson.
And I do stand corrected, I just, I'm reciting information. There was one staff member that was not vaccinated that's doing the test instead.
Okay, thank you for.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to a positive note, the introduction of new administrators. So Lori.
Yes, so we're going to introduce six new administrators tonight. And I'm going to have Dr. Tellier introduce the first two individuals. And we are promoting them now. So, so very excited. We actually, this is a, a actual large number of administrators in the district. The district. So, Dr. Tellier?
Thank you. So I'm going to introduce two of our newest colleagues. The first I would like to introduce to you is Dr. Sarah Vendetti. And Sarah's joining us as our learning partnerships specialist. Hey, Sarah.
Hi there. Hi, everybody. Again, my name is Sarah and I'm so excited to join the Falmouth team as the learning partnership specialist. I'm joining Falmouth after teaching middle school science for the last 14 years. Most recently, I taught grade seven science and led the grade five to 12 science team as curriculum coordinator at the Rising Tide Charter School in Plymouth. While at Rising Tide, I specialized in developing skills related to creating and fostering relationships within the local community. They are bringing these partners into my school and classroom. Most recently in 2019, I earned my doctorate at Northeastern University, focusing my research on creating and sustaining partnerships between educational communities. Besides that, I have a bachelor's degree in earth, environmental and ocean sciences and a master's in science education from UMass Boston.
Wonderful, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to introduce Mr. Michael Siliberto. And Mike is joining us as our Director of Physical Education, Health and Wellness. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm coming over from Easton. I've been over there for 15 years, five years as a physical education teacher at the elementary grades. And the last 10 years I've spent as the vice principal of the middle school. Very, very excited to move back to Cape Cod and I'm very excited to join the Falmouth team.
Wonderful, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so we have so many people to introduce. We're gonna pause there. Are there any questions for either Dr. Vendetti or Mr. Siliberto? Any question? Wonderful. Okay, back to you, Sonya.
Okay, so actually we are, I'm gonna move to Dr. Woodward. That's going to introduce our next three administrators. And they are being promoted now.
I see two of the three.
Well, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Okay, there we go.
All three were there, so there we go.
Wonderful, thank you. So I would like to introduce and welcome, I'll start with Melissa Vareo, who is our special education building administrator and assistant principal at North Falmouth Elementary School. Melissa?
Hi, thank you, Joan. And thank you, Dr. Durr and school committee members for having me here tonight. I'm excited to be here to introduce myself as the special education building administrator and assistant principal at North Falmouth Elementary School. Alongside Principal Adams and the amazing North Falmouth staff. I have been a member of the Falmouth Public Schools and the Falmouth community since the first grade where I attended North Falmouth as a student. My husband, my husband, also a Falmouth Public Schools graduate, and I currently reside in Falmouth with our seven month old son, who is a future Dory and Clipper. For the past seven years, I was a special education teacher at Morrison School, where I developed a passion for and pursued a degree in educational leadership. So it truly is an honor to be an administrator in the school that I have such fond memories of as a child and in a community that I love so much. So thank you for having me here tonight and I'm excited to be in this position.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, I'd like to introduce and welcome Krista Conley, who is our special education building administrator and assistant principal at the T-Ticket Elementary School. Krista?
Thanks, Joan. Superintendent Durr and school committee members for inviting me to introduce myself tonight and share a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Massachusetts, but most recently have returned from a tenure stay on the West Coast with my family. My husband just retired after 21 years of active duty in the military. So we have chosen the Cape to settle down and we are very excited to be back in Massachusetts where our family is. This is my, well, this is my first year in Falmouth. This is my 21st year in public school education. And over that time, I've held various roles, including a full-time Spanish teacher in a dual immersion program, elementary and middle school special ed, uh, teaching positions, as well as a special education team chair and associate principalship. I absolutely feel incredibly fortunate to have landed in Falmouth and have been welcomed with an incredible amount of support, not only at the district level, but at our school level. And I'm really looking forward to an excellent year supporting our T-Ticket scholars and their staff. So thank you so much for inviting me tonight.
Awesome, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Krista. And next I'd like to introduce and welcome Janice Nigro Duramio, who is our special education building administrator and assistant principal at East Falmouth Elementary School. Janice?
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, everyone. My name's Janice Nigro Duramio and I'm so pleased to be invited to introduce myself to the school committee and the families of Falmouth as the special education building administrator and assistant principal. I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person. This, you know, Zoom is a new thing for all of us. And, but I've started to meet all of my students and they're just great. And I look forward to working and advocating for them and their families. And just want to send a big thank you to Principal Goodhein and all this, all the staff at East Falmouth Elementary, because they have been so welcoming. And I, and at the district level too, Joan and, and the superintendent Lori. And I am, I'm so happy to be in Falmouth. I have just left the city of Revere Public School System. I was there for nine years as their audit district coordinator. And I am so happy to be here.
Wonderful, welcome. We're so happy to have you all here. Any questions for any seats? Well, thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Next, yeah. Okay, and so while we are promoting our next person, I'll tell you a little bit about Jacqueline Hartman. She is our new diversity, equity and inclusion officer for the town and for the school department. Jackie has actually lived and worked in Sioux Falls. And, and then she has spent a large portion of her career at, in New York at the East Harlem Scholars Academy and at the Central Queens Academy. She has done a lot of training around anti-racist practices, trauma-informed responses, microaggressions, implicit and unbiased, unconscious bias, bystander interventions and cultural competency. And in her most recent job, she actually trained and advised other faculty and administrators on best practices. And led and planned professional development that focused on anti-racism, equity in classrooms and work environment and multicultural inclusive materials for staff in group and individual settings. And I'm so pleased to introduce Jacqueline Hartman as our new DEI officer.
Welcome. Hi, Jackie.
Yeah.
There you are. Hey there.
Hi. So yes, thank you so much for introducing me. I'm really excited to be a part of the Falmouth community. I spent a month there last year to get away from my New York apartment and I just had a really incredible time. Is what led me to apply for the job. And my, as you said, my professional background is in teaching specifically with ELL students. And that's what I've been doing for about the last five years. I have a master's in ELL and I studied things like gender expectations when it comes to language acquisition and confidence in the classroom, as well as courses on how to create a multicultural inclusive classroom and how to be a strong advocate for my students by learning best methods and practices. In my time teaching, I learned how policy, specifically how it's enforced, holds us all down, especially those in marginalized communities. I always tell my students that the reason that we're learning these skills is so they have as many opportunities available to them as they can have. Unfortunately, until we as adults are implementing better policy, I have fears that the world won't be ready for all the great things that this generation has to offer. I worked at this school in East Harlem that had a major focus on anti-racism work. And that's what attracted me to. And that's what attracted me to that school in particular. I strive to be encouraging and patient as I know that's how I learn new information best. Another goal of mine will be to create strong relationships with students and other faculty and members. Because the research and personal anecdotes show that if someone trusts you, their ability to learn from you grows exponentially. My master's program also helped me better understand how to collect data and do actual research. My work with anti-racism also stressed that qualitative data and personal stories are also important because hard data doesn't always present the full picture. So with my experiences in education, I hope we will find a good balance in our journey to create equity. I'm really appreciative that I'm being trusted with this big task and I look forward to helping us reach our goals and making Falmouth a place that's inclusive for everyone and a place where everyone can thrive.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jackie.
Before questions, I just wanted, Jackie actually will start with us on October 4th, at which time Julian Souso and my staff will sit down with Jackie and we will devise her goals and benchmarks for the year. And so part of that, you know, planning will be new and we'll be able to report out. I want Jackie to be able to come back to a meeting after she's been with us, you know, introduced and we shall have an opportunity then, I think, to share what those goals are and a little bit more about that. In the meantime, that first week, I'm gonna set up a meet and greet for the school committee. I'm gonna do a couple different times. And I'll get that information out to you so that you would actually be able to come in and actually talk with her. And we'll divide it up so that we'll be sensitive of not having at either one of the meetings. So I will send out that information, but we want to have an opportunity that you can actually sit and talk with Jackie.
That's great. And so before that, are there any questions for her now? Great. Well, Jackie, again, thank you for joining us this evening. We look forward to working with you. I hope the weather in New York is great right now. Soak it in while you can because we're getting you soon. Great to see you guys. Take care. Next is to act on school physician consultant appointment. So again, this is a formality and Laurie will explain it. It's just to renew our contract with Dr. Parkinson.
Yes, so Dr. Parkinson has been a huge help always, but particularly during our most challenging year last year. The nurses come to rely on him. He was a huge support, but also to Dr. Woodward and myself, always making himself available. He's on my speed dial, very supportive. And I think that, and I recommend that we continue with the contract. I think this is not the time to introduce someone new, but I think the consistency and the support that Dr. Parkinson has offered us. We normally look at one-year contracts and I'm actually recommending to the school committee that we do a two-year contract at $8,500 per year for Dr. Parkinson.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to act on the school physician consultant appointment?
I'll make a motion.
On a second?
A second, sure.
Can you just tell us, is that an increase?
Yes. Not much.
I just want to make sure.
It is a very slight increase. Dr. Parkinson actually said, keep the money for the kids.
Are there any questions? No questions. Okay, are we? So all in favor? I'm so excited. I was like, yes, you're back. All in favor of approving Dr. Parkinson for a two-year contract to be the school physician consultant?
I.
Opposed? And no abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Parkinson. We so appreciate you. Thank you so much.
I will be seeing my psychiatrist tomorrow.
See you there.
I'll call you with questions right before.
Okay, next up is to ask on the budget timeline in your packet. We saw this budget timeline over the summer. The only modification that we voted on was to add a meeting in February so that we have adequate time to vote on the budget before it goes to town meeting. So is there a motion to act on the budget timeline?
I'll make that motion.
Terry, a second. The writer has a second. So all in, any questions? Any questions on the budget timeline? See none? All in favor of approving the budget timeline? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, unanimous. So thank you. And can we make sure this gets to our partners over in Kinkham?
Absolutely.
The sooner they mark it on the calendar, the better.
Absolutely. Sharon will be on that one.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is to ask on operating protocols. So as you recall, we had our first read last meeting. These are the operating protocols that we took a look at in our retreat in August, which seems like a lifetime ago. And Leah, thank you, volunteered to do some edits on the document. And so you have the updated copy in the packet.
I'm sorry, am I jumping ahead? We're just moving so quick. I'm trying to keep up. I just had a couple little edits. Do you want them now or you want, I can make a motion.
Yeah, let's make a motion. And then let's go for the, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the school committee superintendent operating protocols for 21, 22. Can I make edits now with three edits? Give me a second.
A second.
And now hit it with the others. Okay, number 10. I think we should capitalize town administrative administration because we're referring to something proper. Wait, number 10. Capitalize the word town.
I don't even see the word town.
A second.
Number 15. When speaking in a public forum, we may to keep the pattern of it constantly being we.
Could I just edit? Why don't we just say only speak? Get rid of the we and the may.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
I.
She saw you edit.
When speaking in a public forum, only speak.
Yeah, that works.
And I'm sorry, I'm trying to make the same edit. I'm trying to keep Andrea's style for number 19.
Individual opinions may be, wait, while individual opinions may be expressed. If you want to keep it.
Okay, while individual. No, that's different though. That's changing the content. So I think we just need to go while we may express our individual.
Okay.
While we may express our individual vote publicly, the decision, the majority is the decision of the school committee. And there are other places where we say we and are. I just wanted them to not be some our, some of you's consistency. Okay, that's all I had. Sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the operating protocols. I will recap the edits. Number 10, capitalizing town administrators. Bullet point 15, to take out you may. And on 19, to take out you, and then we'll read while we, so on and so forth. So we have we and our.
We.
Yeah.
While.
Our. Thank you. Express our. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. I will always entertain. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving operating protocols with the edits outlined? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And unanimous. Thank you very much. So Sharon, yes, we'll get a new copy of that printed and we will.
We can sign it.
Sign it at our next meeting. Yay. That is great. It's great to start that summary. Moving on to act on school committee goals for 2021, 2022. So again, this was a document that we had our first read at our last meeting and it was shared with all of you via Google Docs. So this document incorporates some of the edits that were received. Terry, I know that you had one more edit after we closed the availability of the document. Yeah, should I motion to? Yes. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the Falmouth School Committee goals 2021 to 2022. Kelly's gonna stop again. Okay? And so, yes, Terry. Okay, so in the goal number one, under key actions, I would like to add a bullet. Okay. Do you want me to say it slowly? Yes, please. Okay. Received periodic reports from the leads and the leads should be in quotations. Yeah, okay. Which will be benchmarks for assessing progress towards the goal.
Repeat that there.
I heard received periodic reports from the leads, which will be benchmarks for assessing goal. Progress towards the goal. For assessing progress toward the goal. Now, don't we, I would suggest that that's a bullet for all of these because we want to make sure. And in fact, that's a great segue because I would like to see us make a point of having quarterly updates on these goals. So the first one should be in December that we speak to where we're going. So I think this is a wonderful bullet and I would propose that we add it to all three goals. I agree. Go ahead, Andrea.
So I guess I have this question on what we're actually voting. Is it the goal itself or every piece of information that we have? Because I think we're sort of falling into some of the, some of the things that happened last year when we were assessing our progress. And there's so many different things, like we're stating a lot of key actions, which are all steps toward, possible steps toward our goals. But there's a lot on there and I think we're going to come into the same thing when we're trying to assess whether we reach those at the end of the year because some people will look at that and say, well, my thing I was really interested in didn't happen. So no, we didn't reach that goal. So I'm wondering if we're just saying, we're actually just voting on what our goals are and these are general ideas.
Yeah.
I guess I would feel better voting on it with that as opposed to saying, these are all the discrete things that we are going to complete in this year or in the next two years.
Yeah, that's absolutely a fair point. And I see this as being very fluid. So the goals, to your point, are very concrete, but the key actions could shift. And I also appreciate, this was one of your edits, about saying a multi-year communication strategy in that currently we want to be, we want to set ourselves up for success and some of this can lead to that multi-year communication strategy. So I propose that we, yes, we vote on the goals and the action steps are fluid, but ideas. I think we definitely need parameters to proceed.
And I think that that will become clear through what you just said about having a quarterly update.
Exactly.
We'll be seeing where we are and adjustments we need to make in the next upcoming year.
Yes, absolutely. We are. I think that the quarterly update should be in the medals of success and the key action. So you're suggesting that Terry's bullet, the received periodic reports should be in the measures. Yeah, that's how we're measuring our success. Yes, right? Yes, that's fair. So thoughts on moving that bullet to measures of success? It could really flow either way.
Yeah, I feel like it's really kind of.
It's, yeah, it's.
One, one. Yeah, I like it in measures of success, but I don't know if it matters if we're going to decide to only approve the goal and leave the rest as our operational pieces for how we're gonna.
I think we should leave it where it is, where I put it because, as Andrea said, there's a lot there. But, I mean, and I don't think there's anything wrong with throwing out a wide net. You know, I mean, and maybe somebody can do one of these things, but not all of us can. But right, I mean, it doesn't live in us. Right, exactly. It's just a guide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like it.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on the goals as there?
So what was that, keeping it in the key actions?
So, yeah, so Terry's motion is to keep it in the key actions.
Okay.
So we will vote on that and we'll see where that goes. But any other questions on the goals or key actions? Okay, so Terry's motion, if you could say it again. So we're clear and not so stipulate that you, your bullet is under key actions. I have to say that? Okay, so I.
Oh, sorry, Bill has a question.
Do I have to say this?
So I'm sorry, just for clarification, I think I heard two completely different things. We had the motion and then we talked about maybe just voting on just what the goals themselves are. But now it sounds like we're voting on the goals and everything.
So what we're voting on is putting this on the document. We're going to agree. She's going to make the motion with the goals, adding this to the key actions.
So if we have any additional edits to key actions and measures of success, we should bring those up as well.
Yeah, so this is a very fluid document, so it's going to be a working document. Something else comes up, we're going to add to it as time goes on.
I just wanted to clarify, so if you're just voting on the goals that are in italics, then there's no need for me to bring up any.
Well, why don't you bring it because we're talking.
All right. On our second goal. To key action, let's see, there's one on the bottom page, two, three, four. So the third one from the top of the page. It says, ensure the policies and procedures do not give an unfair advantage or disadvantage to any individual or group through policy review. I think that should read a review of policies and practices.
So are you thinking, should it be procedures since that's what we say earlier in the sentence? Or do you want it specifically to be practices, which might be a little different?
I think practices.
Okay, so removing the first procedure.
Well, procedure is fine. I mean, that's, we're ensuring the policies and procedures are in place. My concern is I don't want to pigeonhole us later into just policy review because we all know that there's a difference between policy and practice.
Okay.
So I think we, I think we need to have that freedom to also be looking at practices as well. I don't want to get into it later and say, well, this is a practice. Like, oh, nope, sorry, we said it's policy. So I just, I think we just need to add that in.
Thank you for the clarification, Andrea.
So I have a question for that as well in terms of, I think that why policy was called out was because of our purview. So I guess I'm just wanted more clarification for what practices mean in terms of what actually the school, because these are school committee goals.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, you know, under our purview, we already be looking at policies and make sure they're followed. But if there are other practices that are going on, then that does fall under the purview of reviewing policies. If there are practices that are going on that we maybe don't have a policy for or need, then we need to be aware of that to be able to review that.
I'm sorry. Being on the policy committee, I, and other policy members can remember that we have said sometimes, do we actually do this policy or do we need to change it? So the policy committee has been doing that and I agree with Bill that that practices should be in there because we will change it.
Yeah, and I did take that into consideration of the fact that practices isn't necessarily a word that's used in our purview, but practices become policy in the legal world. So we need to make sure that we do review that.
Leah, I think I have an idea because it does make me a little uncomfortable with knowing that our purview is the policy piece. But I think what I'm hearing, Bill, is that like, we need to see the policy in practice, right? So like when we're, when we're doing these, we have these policies out and I think this is what you were saying, Terry, is that are we really doing that, right? Is that really the practice that's happening to ensure that that policy is happening? Or the reverse side of that, are there practices that we do that should be a policy? Right, so we have that conversation.
My suggestion would be to have it be review, through review and practices of policy.
Or, so there was, so it still aligns to our policies, but that we're still getting at that root, which I think, Bill, is what you're getting at is that at least that there's these actions that happen.
It is, but like Terry and Sharon, there's a difference between a practice of an existing policy and practices that may be around that may require a new policy. So I think we need to make sure we have both of those objectives. It's not necessarily. It's not necessarily.
Andrea, so I'm just trying to explain why I'm sort of struggling with that. One thing that school committees are always advised against is purview creep, right? We really do need to stick to what is within the school committee purview. And just recently, you know, we went through a, this comprehensive policy review with a consultant from the Association of School Committees to go through every single policy in our entire manual and compare that to the model policies and to what is, you know, anything new that has happened, any kind of legal changes. And I think that that's what Terry was bringing up. There were times where, you know, we would read that, because, you know, not everybody has read the entire policy manual, and we would give to something and say, well, wait, do we really do that? And I can remember, Lori, because when we started that process, you were new, and you were, you know, scribbling down, and I'm looking into that, and I'm looking into that to make sure that we had alignment between practices and policy. So we really have just comprehensively done that big piece of it. And, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to wonder what else there might be. And I think when, in relation, because this is in relation to goal number two specifically, and that that's around the equity piece of it. And so I think the idea came up that we want to make sure that the policies, as are written, have equity in mind.
Right.
So.
Let me, let me give you a kind of a real world example of why I'm thinking and the way I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay. Years ago, police officers making traffic stops. And perhaps there was a practice of them making traffic stops only on people of certain race or ethnicity. There was no policy in their manual saying they could not do that. But the practice of it was inappropriate, incorrect, racist. So they built a policy to stop them. I think we need to look at practices that are happening or throughout, in addition to what our policies are. I think we need to make sure we examine practices and see if maybe that there is a policy that perhaps we are missing. So that's, that's where I see the difference in those two. You can go into, you know, if an accreditation agency comes in and looks at all your policies, they're looking at your policies, and then they're making sure that you're following now. But they're also going around and interviewing everybody and asking them what your practices are to make sure that you have a policy in place for that. So I think, I think it does fall within our purview. If, if our purview is to make sure that we have policies in place that protect our students and give them the best possible quality education, we have to look at practices from, from that standpoint. Under the understanding that we are looking at a two C of a policy needs to be made, not just to look at practices and say, oh, well, do that. So I, I understand where the hesitation is, but I'm trying to explain as best I can where the difference is.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, and I'm going to just put on my, my school administrator cap for a second, because I feel that the practice piece would come from school administration that, and potentially, you know, that Lori, you would share some things that are going on with us, you know, get us informed about it. And then you would say, you know, this is something that I think the policy, we should really look at as a policy. And then we would take that on. I, I feel that the practice piece is a school administration piece, and that then that making it a policy piece would come onto us, but that we would be overstepping a bit if we were looking at practices without it coming from you and saying, we need to get it to this next level. Not that we don't want, we want to know what's going on, but it's just not that we look at all the practices. It's just, so I think that's where I feel a little bit like concerns that we will go step into school administration.
Is there something to add to the practices that would alleviate that concern? So is it in collaboration with superintendent? Is there something like thinking outside of the box, that something could be added to? That Bill's really important, in my opinion, sentence in there, but to couch it in a way that. Is more something to.
Yes.
Okay, so starting at the beginning of the phrase, of the sentence. Ensure that policies and procedures, comma, or the lack thereof, do not give an unfair advantage or disadvantage to any individual or group or through a review of policies and input from the administration.
I don't.
Terry.
I don't think we should say to the administration, because that's not who we would want to always get our information from.
Kelly, I really liked the way you started that out. I think we could actually end it at the word group.
Okay, I was trying to, I was really hearing what you were saying about like, the absence of a policy is a policy. And sometimes you need to make a new one, and so I was trying to like, so I'm glad that that met your need.
I, I think you nailed it.
Okay.
Just if we just ended that at group.
Yes. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ensure that policies and procedures or the lack thereof do not give an unfair advantage or disadvantage to any individual or group. That actually, you're right. It doesn't need any more than that. I totally agree.
Yes.
And I. Sorry. It's still an issue, or it can be an issue.
Right, right, the absence of a policy can be an issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, Melissa.
I, I was just really going to chime in and say, I appreciate you bringing that up, Bill, because I think that there has been a lot of lack of policies being their own policy that's been going on that are different. And I'm not pinpointing anything, I just think this is a good time to bring this, I guess, to wrap it up. It's not great, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so again, we have a motion and a second to approve the goals as written. Again, it's a working document, but we are going to add to the key actions, receive periodic reports from the leads, which will be benchmarks for assessing progress toward goals. And that addition is going to go with every goal. And then under goal two, ensure that policies and procedures, comma, or lack thereof, do not give a unfair advantage or disadvantage to any individual or group. Those are the only edits that I saw. So all in favor of adopting these goals for the 2021, 2022 school year with the edits that I've read? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous. We discussed it, and again, this is a Google Doc, and it's going to stay up, everyone has access to it. And we can edit it and add and just use that to, for our meetings, when we need quarterly to give an update. And next up, it's the overview of the superintendent's evaluation process and timeline. So that is included in your packet. The evaluation subcommittee met on August 31st to review the timeline. And just a few things that I want to highlight. The timeline has been extended through May for our piece of it, because there are many things that Lori's going to get into that are really year-long initiatives. And this will give a more robust opportunity for us to really dig into her work and observe the progress. I know that it's always been a concern of the election cycle and school committee members' terms. So the evaluation, skipping ahead to the second page, the evaluation will be due on May 13th, which is the Friday, as I have it, before the town elections. If I have a different date for town elections, I will revise this timeline accordingly. And then the other thing to note, just for now, and I'll give a, a deeper presentation later, I think it's October meeting. Three evaluations will be due in January related to Lori's goals. So I'll give you a moment to scroll through the timeline and see if you have any questions. So I know it's not as much of an issue with, now that goals are not necessarily a single year, but I'm again gonna make the plug that we extend the timeline to, I know it's very inconvenient when people roll off the committee and new people come on and are trying to do an evaluation, but I think that it's more beneficial to have Lori have an actual full school year.
And you'll notice I did this, like, last year, it was due in April, and we've extended it to May. So it's, it's a gradual thing, but.
I know, but I'm just making it so, yeah, you would have like.
To align with a school year, like, June to, actually, to align with Lori's contract, which is not, you know, September to May, it's June to July. So, no, the other way, July to June. Yeah, so we're, we're going to get there, this is going to be the year that we sort of practice and see, and then next year we can build to June. But yeah, that was always our intent, I appreciate that.
Do you have any other question? Okay, so. So that is just the overview of the evaluation process and the timeline. And things to evaluate, turning it over to Superintendent George, discuss your draft goals.
Okay, so tonight I'll be discussing them, and if there's any input, I welcome that. And then according to the timeline, I will actually be presenting, and you'll be acting on it on October 12th. So the draft, first goal, goal one, the student learning goal, implement district and school plans for re-engaging all students in full-time in-person learning in safe and healthy school environments.
Now we don't have.
Oh, you're just reading it, right?
We don't have a copy. That's okay, moving on. We will share a copy.
Okay.
My, my misunderstanding, I thought that I was just discussing them tonight, not presenting them. So just some key actions. We would develop and ensure implementation of district and school strategy for reconnecting with students, for increasing student engagement, for increasing student growth and achievement, for ensuring students' social, emotional needs are addressed, and that we are following the health and safety protocols under that goal. Goal two, outreach and communication. After limited interactions during the COVID-19 2021 school year, reestablish in-person opportunities for engagement with staff, students, and families. Continue community engagement, this is the district by call. So just hold in-person staff listening sessions at least three times during the school year. Reestablish in-person conversations with the superintendent of each school. Two times during the school year, reestablish in-person coffee hour with families. Four times during the school year. Hold in-person family sessions at schools and community centers at least two times during the school year. Reestablish superintendent-student advisory, and meet the students at least four times during the school year. Continue to connect with our community partners and collaborate with the school committee leads. Since.
Collaborate with school committee, that works.
Okay, collaborate with school committees, but there we go. Okay, goal three, professional practice goal. Focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Work with principals and other district leaders to carry out the established vision and common language and delve deeper to the professional learning for all staff. The challenge are police understanding of practices in the pursuit of equitable academic and social, emotional outcomes for all students. We would continue participation in the professional learning with administrative team. Coordinate continued professional learning with all staff. And right now, we are, this year, we will be continuing our sessions with Dr. Khaleesi Warnum. And we do have a national presenter at one of our sessions. We had continue review curriculum inclusion opportunities, continue review, to review program data and increase diverse student inclusion. Continue building and maintaining relationships through teacher adoption of strategies. Make systemic changes to inform our hiring practices and mentoring strategies. Cultivate skills to effectively interact with students. Support the DEI officer and continue to connect with community partners. Would be key actions.
And as Lori mentioned, this was an overview of her goals, just so that we can get a sample of where she's going, what direction she's going in. And on October 12th, she will give us a full presentation on her goals, and we'll act on them at that time. But in the interim, what?
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, in the interim.
Are there any questions for Lori?
Yes, Kelly. I'm wondering if I could just share a couple thoughts. So in the first goal, and probably even the, the third one on equity and inclusion, you know, I think a huge piece of that, of that work is also figuring out ways to allocate dollars to align the work that we're trying to do. And especially with ESR. I don't know that it would align in that pretty goal as much, but it certainly does in the first one. And I don't underestimate the amount of time and effort that goes into the money management piece of the work that you just listed as those actions. So I'd like to see something that mentions all of that work, since you're going to have to be doing it and making sure that the dollars align with the goal. And I have another thing, you know, I can't.
Are there any other questions? Well, Kelly is.
I can't, it'll come to me eventually, but it was mainly that one.
Do you have a question? You have one question?
Okay, so thank you very much, that again, that was an overview, and we'll have a full presentation on October 12th. And if you think of a question.
Yes, exactly. No, I, I lost it, it's gone.
Okay, we're going to get a copy.
And we'll get a copy, right?
Yes. Yep, okay. Back to Dr. Dore for the update from the superintendent and rest of her update.
So schools are open, that's great. We have everybody in, in person five days a week, so it's very exciting to have people back. We do have some new protocols. Our only restriction is the mask wearing, and our students seem to be settling in fine. Everyone seems to be fine, as, as they were last year. They were great at following all the rules, and now it's just the mask, and we don't seem to be having any problems, which I'm pleased with. Students are, I think, more excited because they're going to have more interactive learning in the classrooms. Students at Lawrence now get to go back to moving classes. I think that is exciting for them at that, at that level. And so the schools really are looking fairly back to normal. We're just wearing masks. So, and then we certainly have the protocols in place to try to keep our students and staff, you know, as safe as possible. So everything is going smooth, as I said, day five today. It's very early in the, but we're excited to be back. I have a little bit of preliminary data. You know, October 1 is our official date, and then I would be doing the full presentation on enrollment. But just to give a little bit of update where we stand on our enrollment. Without including our out-of-district students, which is 41. Our total students right now is 3,060. And just as a little comparison, last year it was 3,029. So we're 31 students over last year. And, but we are still seeing that downward trend. If we go back and look at 2019, which I think is probably a little bit better measure. And as we had seen the trends over the last five to 10 years, there's a consistent downward trend for enrollment, not just in Falmouth, but across the Cape. And that number is 3251. And that is without the out of, out of districts on all three of those, so that's consistent. Great news is our kindergarten level is the highest that we've seen in three years. So this year we had 251 kindergarten students. In last year, in 2020, we had 193, and then previous year it was 226. So if we use 2019 as, you know, somewhat of that measure, we're up 25 students in kindergarten from 2019. So.
And how many? How many kindergarten sections do we have?
Kindergarten sections, we. Kindergarten sections, we have uh at North Falmouth, we uh now have five sections. Uh, that's the first, uh since my tenure here, uh at East Falmouth, we have three sections. That's up from two from last year. Uh, at Mullen Hall, we have four sections, um that is down one uh section uh from previous years. And at T-Ticket, we have um three sections, and that uh remains the same uh year before.
Any other questions?
Yes, um going back to the opening of school, and obviously everybody being in person, and we brought up the fact that we do have ten students on quarantine, is there any discussion in reference to remote learning, or going back to that, how do these, how do these students who are quarantined catch up?
So um Dussie uh is not allowing uh remote learning this year. So we can um the traditional uh way um that um students uh would make up work when they're absent uh is what Dussie is saying, that you could use that, or you can um have the opportunity, stu- uh teachers can absolutely connect with their um their students through a synchronous opportunity or meet with the students, but there's no requirement for that. So in Falmouth, um the playlist um last year were developed, and so uh students can engage in all their work through the uh the teacher's playlist.
And is there an expectation for how long the student is engaged with that playlist, or how many hours a day they're logged on, or there is no set guidance from Dussie, how long they need to?
So um a school day counts for a student if they're engaged at half the uh half the day.
To clarify, there is no remote school, so that wouldn't actually count as a day. They're still considered absent, correct?
Um, so if they engage in the work with their teacher, it's a it's a half a day. If they're not engaged with the the teacher, there needs to be clarification. I think there's a a little bit there, yes, but I think it's a.
Right, cuz I I've read that differently, that we can't actually do that, that we have to mark them up some.
Yeah.
Um, so, okay.
So um, yes, and um Dussie's reviewing, so we're supposed to be getting more guidance toward the end of the month on that option as well? I know. Um, I still want to encourage our students to stay up with their work and engage through those playlists, so that that when they re-engage in the classroom, that um they are, you know, where where their classmates are.
Sorry.
Um, maybe some of the practices we use on snow day work. You know how we can count snow days if the kids do work, am I correct in that?
Wait, that was last year only. Um, oh, the commissioner has not yet decided if he's going to allow for snow days, so we may not even be able to do that this year. Might not be an option.
Oh.
We're waiting, we're waiting it here on earth.
Now, does Dussie give you sort of um not a warning, but a heads up when these, if the guidelines are gonna be revised and submitted, or is it just a surprise moment and you have to pivot?
Um, oh.
I actually know. Um, yeah, okay.
Yes, and so um I just wanted to give a little update on uh restorative practices and and uh we'll about what our plans are for the year. Does she have a question?
No, I just remembered my whole thing from earlier. It was just sort of practices, I'm sorry.
She took like a long time.
Yes.
I do think I had it in there, but I didn't say it. I may not have, but I do think it's there. Okay, but I will, I will have to make sure if it's not. Okay, so um just um a little bit, we've talked about restorative practices and um at some point, I'd really like to have a full presentation on restorative practices. But to give you a little idea of um continuing in that manner, um you know that um before COVID, the administrators were trained, our instructional leadership uh team did a year book study around uh restorative practices, and certainly our APs uh that had uh really been leading the charge around restorative practices are, you know, beginning to implement that. Our next stage was really to um uh have provide professional development for our staff. And so um that, so we have a plan this year uh to be able to do that. We kind of devised the plan during our admin work week. We, the SRO actually joined us um during um the session around restorative practices uh in August, and will continue um to participate and be witness during that uh that process. Uh, as well as our DEI officer, um she's actually uh engaging in professional um learning now. Um, she is familiar and um absolutely understands the philosophy of restorative practices, uh and I wanted her to have a little bit more depth um so that she could actually help lead us through um this year. So um we have contracted with um uh, I forget the name of the the company. It's like Seashore Consultants, I believe. Good name. Um, but Curtis Bates is the um the person that will be providing the um the uh professional development for our staff. So we will um first start next Monday with a uh initial with Curtis with our administrative team, and then on October eighth, he will be training um the the first part of the um training with all of our pre-K through grade six um staff members. And then on October uh nineteenth, um he will um pretty much present the same training, although could be adjusted um for grade level um with Lawrence and then the high school. And then we will continue the training with um Mr. Curtis um during the uh staff meetings after school, so there'll be a total of another hour of training where he'll go in and work directly with uh the staff at each school around uh restorative practices. And so um that is our uh plan moving forward to um bring our next level with our staff. And I and I uh want to say that our administrators on the very first day of their staff meeting um kind of introduced this thought, and it seemed like that uh people were really excited about being able to have this um professional development.
Great, any questions for Lori? Yeah, just um we we get the opportunity to get some training on it also.
Uh, so I will send the dates and times out on October eighth and the nineteenth, um and I would encourage you to join us, yes. I don't know why, if you wanted to do the staff meetings after, I got, I mean, you know, and the continuing of the training.
Well, I guess I'm thinking of something.
Just for you.
School committee, like.
Yeah.
Cuz the, it just is very different for the staff, just that we would get an overview, um not actually the prac- practice part.
If that's if that's inside of the school committee, I can see if I can get, um, yes, I could actually see if I can get um an opportunity for the school committee to have a session, is that?
I think we just need like a higher level, you know, understanding. I I I think it's inappropriate for us to, I mean, the teachers are gonna be really working to try and figure out how to implement, and you know, I I don't, I don't wanna be in their business when they're working on that. But I would love the higher level piece.
Yeah, and maybe if we could piggyback it on a meeting of, you know, before. That's what maybe there's something to it. Doesn't have to be very long, but just kind of an overview for us.
Okay, yes, I can certainly try to coordinate that.
Um, Andrea.
Lori, you were saying that the um assistant principals are really leading the charge on that sort of rate. And I guess anyone who's just um wondering because of, we just have introduction of three new ones um of how that fits in with work to get them up to speed, or does it shift in some way on in terms of who who actually leads the charge at that school?
And when I said, yes, so when I um said lead the charge, um that the uh idea of bringing restorative practices to Fama um really came from the assistant principals. So this was something that they, you know, they researched and they looked up and they brought it to the administration. Um, and that's when we decided to get training and we agreed, and so we've really been working, you know, alongside um the administration. So um we will definitely have opportunities for the um the three new people to um uh engage in the book study, the DEI officer will have, you know, could always offer additional sessions. And if Dr. Teller is there, I think we're offering a session around um uh the same book that we did, or um, you wanna mention, I don't know the particulars, but I know we're doing it.
Sure, um, so we're gonna be offering um a uh workshop similar to how we're offering the cultural proficiency workshops, and we're gonna be using the book Better Than Carrots or Sticks, um which is the book that our instructional leadership, instructional leadership team originally started our restorative practices journey with. Um, it's got six chapters, very accessible read, um and gives some pretty fast strategies that people can readily adopt as they go through um the workshop and have the conversations.
Thank you. Great, any other questions for Lori? That the all your update is this for tonight? Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, next is to routine business approved minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and this was our um forum on that mask wearing. Are there, is there a motion to approve the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one? Make a motion, uh second? Second, so, um any edits on this particular? Okay, all in favor of approving the, is your hand up?
Nope, I'm ready to vote. Okay. She's ready. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, case you unanimous.
You're eager.
I I eager, eager.
Okay, next is to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth. Make a motion. And Melissa makes the motion, is there a second? Andrea, seconds, um any edits? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that passes unanimously as formal. Next, committee member reports.
Yeah, um, so I have now attended two affirmative action committee meetings, and so we are meeting on the first Wednesday of the month at seven P M. And um I've been really being a listener there, I'm kind of getting a sense of what the group is working on, but we are um or they are working on um the mission statement. Um, we've been talking about the land acknowledgement statement and equity and voting locations. Those have been some topics that have come up, so um I look forward to being there the next, I guess, October, beginning of October. It's almost October, but yeah, so that's just the update.
Thank you, Leah. Hi, Kelly.
Um, uh, we've had, I'm gonna say three um really great meetings with FBA, working on our MOA for this year. Um, we're moving very long, so hopefully it'll be coming sometime soon for the committee approval.
Yes, absolutely, very exciting.
My first uh KICCO collaborative work meeting um last week. And uh, yeah, enjoyed getting a chance to see all those people, meet them virtually. Um, but one of the things that did come up that we uh should probably make sure that is on our radar is a, you know, district-wide and actually, I mean, nationwide to look at is uh a bus driver shortage. And uh that is consistent, you know, I've I've been tracking now, any CDL professional driver shortage uh is is a real thing. So that's uh something we definitely just wanna make sure that we, you know, keep on our radar. Probably already is.
Patrick, can you talk a little bit about that?
So that's.
We always have that one posted.
Yeah, I, you know, I I've done. Keeping a CDL up, I I have a class C CDL. Just exacerbating the issue was this last year and a half. I mean, I don't know if anybody in here has had to get an appointment at the R M V. But, you know, uh imagine trying to do that for a professional licensure and stuff, so it's it's uh, there was already a shortage of professional drivers over time, and you know, it's making it more and more difficult right now, so just keep that one. That's all.
Great, thank you. Can I ask a little question? Because, just to get a sense of what is involved in getting that license, in in case we have anyone who's interested in Falmouth, because we do, we do really need drivers right now, what would it entail to get that license?
No, I did mine in South Carolina, so it may be a little different in Massachusetts. Um, but, you know, there there is absolutely a written proficiency test, and um from that, probably, you know, af- after that, you do have to um make sure that you get a, if there's a medical card, a medical evaluation that you have to go through that's specific to professional driving. Uh, you have to go to um the R B, there there is a a behind-the-wheel test, and they don't provide the vehicles for you. So if you wanna get uh, you know, your license on a bus, you have to with the boss, or you have to get some sort of training through the organization that's trying to hire. There are some companies that will will train you and work you through the process and so forth, but um it is, it is, it's a worthwhile process. I mean, if if you are looking for a career that uh can make a good living, uh by all means, look into driving. Um, but it it is definitely a process, and it's also a process to keep up, you have to have medical evaluation for a couple of years. Um, you have to have, uh with with a school bus driver, it's not just a a C D L, but it's a C D L with a passenger endorsement, and it's a a school bus endorsement. So I have a passenger endorsement, but I don't have an endorsement for a school bus. I can drive a church bus, but I cannot drive kids to and from school. Um, so that's an additional step, and so it it is is absolutely doable, and um, but but there is a process that it takes, and if you uh, you know, i- if if a district or somebody has a shortage of drivers, it's it's not something that you can just, you know, put a job fair together, bring some people in and have people on the road, spend a couple of weeks, you you have got to really push to find people, either A, that already have a qualification, or there's a long way for them to get the qualification. So um it is, it is rather, I probably didn't explain it as well as I could.
It does sound like it's a process and it's a crisis that uh across the nation, but I know we have the National Guard coming in in Chelsea right now to support the school bus situation, so um it sounds like it's probably hard, well, it's a little bit of a challenge to get the license, and then um when you don't have people who have the license, you do have to give some time.
Right, right.
Thanks. Yeah, sure. Any other questions? I was sorry, Andrea.
Um, so it's, you know, everything's starting back up again, so um Vips had their first board meeting um this past week and um are so exciting, excited to get the volunteers back into the schools. Um, you know, there were reports about mentees who were just couldn't wait to see their their mentors again, so um that's on the forward. Um, we also heard about um a new AmeriCorps fellow that will be working with the Vips program this year, and um she sounds amazing, was able to introduce herself and give some background, um, you know, everything that she's done. And um I can't wait for you to to meet her, I'm sure, when they do the presentation, that she'll be a big part of that. I'm looking forward to the new program that she's gonna be really spinning out this year.
Awesome. Now, have they found, has it found out most of the volunteers are returning this year to work with their their students, their mentees?
It's it, it's a mixture of whether all of that will be in person or not, but yes, and the programs that were started last year to fill in the gaps, a lot of the academic approach uh coaching and tutoring, um it's also gonna continue through this year.
Great, great. Any other updates, Kelly?
Um, I did an M A S C webinar last week on communicating around um tough topics, and I just wanted, it it was, it was a lot in response to like mask mandates and um meetings that people were having that were really difficult. And I just wanted to comment that some of the things, a lot of the things actually that they were recommending as strategies to um keep things on task and to move agendas forward, we already do. And, you know, it's just really nice to be part of something where the things that they're telling you to do, like holding public forums and listening to people, having time limits, having rules about public comment, enforcing those rules, you know, we do all of those things just regularly. Um, so it was just really, it was really nice to listen to something that wasn't all these things that we need to stop.
Yeah, so unfortunately, one of my meetings ran late, but I was signing up for that as well, so I'm glad it was positive.
It was, it was really good, um, and Chris Warren was one of the speakers, and, you know, he's connected to Falmouth, so. And Chris Warren was one of the speakers, and, you know, he's connected to FAMTH, so it was great.
Wonderful, any other updates, committee member updates? Terry.
It isn't an update, and it is a request for information.
Okay, let's hear it, we'll find a category.
Well, it, it maybe it is. You know, I want to say again, I love, love, love hearing the kids on that field, you know, but like, last night, I think it was 8:00, 8:30, I heard the band out there. So I have a question for Patrick, he has been not involved. Whenever we were doing the, you know, the original plans for it, and people were saying, well, when are we going to get a second one? So maybe he, maybe you have some magical answer. Or I wonder, how do they regulate all the people who use it? And do we, you know, is it hard to, it must be hard on the kids, because they can't all practice at the same time, just practice, let alone games and everything, so I don't know.
The high school has a nice rotation of, of that, so that it's not always one group. And there is, the, the, so, so sometimes the band gets on earlier. Sometimes field hockey gets on earlier.
Yeah, I know they rotate around, because I do hear the band at other times too, but. And I just wondered, do you know, do other school districts around have more than one field? I mean, I think Barnstable does.
There are some districts with more than one field, yes.
Yes, yeah, so I don't know, maybe we can put it on our horizon. The other thing is stu-, student member, you know, student kids being part of our meetings. I wanted to put a plug into work on bringing that back. And the bull, I think we're all happy now, we love the bull, can we bring the bull back? Sharon probably has it.
Bring back the bull. Okay, I'm literally writing that down. Okay, any other requests for information, Melissa?
I'm going to jump on the Terry wagon, file this under, I don't know what. But I love to see the emails with the multiple languages on them, but what I really love is to see the Google Translate extension link that I seem to see, which I feel like limits the multiple emails coming in. As a parent, I'm sort of speaking, and as a committee member as well, when we see the multiple emails to the multiple schools, I love to see the Google Translate extension, then you can just click that as opposed to getting lots of emails in multiple languages. And then I have a question about, are we offering any staff or student trauma support after the last year and a half? Coming back to school, having it, I know it's been scary. I know that there's been some, some children who are frightened to get tested. I tried the last time to, to really drive home the fact that the testing today is so not like the testing of yesterday. Yesterday, using that mostly. It's really not, it's so nothing like, but I think that, you know, kids are frightened, and it's scary to have any kind of procedure, and this is a medical procedure, done when your, you know, your parent or your loved one isn't there to kind of hold your hand. So that portion, as well as staff and students coming back to school, I feel like everyone has PTSD now. So I just didn't know if there was any talk statewide, nationwide, on offering that kind of program.
And we're doing some.
We're doing some stuff, yeah. I don't know, we want to take time for Dr. Woodward to do it, or give a presentation.
Mine was sort of the same thing, so if I can share what my request was going to be, and then we can decide whether we want to do it now or just bump it to another. But it's very much tied to that exact point that Melissa was just making. You know, it's only been a few days, but I'm wondering what it's looking like in the guidance offices and, and in the bridge rooms at the high school in Lawrence. What are they seeing, and do they have what they need? Because I cannot imagine what it must be like. And if we need to pivot or hire, or whatever it is that we need to do, I just, I don't want us to be in November feeling like we should have before. But I also don't want to make more work for the guidance counselors to tell us like stats and stuff, because that does make it worse, so that was mine.
If there's something coming, I can certainly, we.
Yeah.
Me too. I certainly don't need an answer right this second, like if there's something.
So why don't we plan on, Dr. Woodward giving an update next?
Perfect.
That'd be awesome.
And then my third bullet, if we're, if we're done with that portion, I would just like to really encourage use of the outdoor space slash classrooms. I don't know if it's on a rotating, I, I don't know how it works. If, you know, staff, teachers are encouraged, like you're, who, who decides? Like Terry's last question about how the high school decides who uses the field. And I'm sure that Kathleen or who's ever in charge of that field has a good rotating schedule. What are we doing for the outdoor classrooms? Are we doing something similar? There was a lot of work to get these classrooms up and running, and I would like to see them used as much as possible while the weather is nice. Like, are we, are we encouraging, can we have lunch out there? Can we, you know, oh, I don't see anyone out there, let's scoot out there for 10 minutes and do some reflective drawing. I don't know, I just, I, I really hope that we're using them for the amount of effort that went in. I really hope that.
They're being utilized by everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have an update from each school, how they're managing.
Thank you.
Yeah, do I see your hand?
No, I just, I, I never do this, but just, I wanted to just make a point of order, just then, you know, we, this is the time that we're asking for follow-up information, so just to not put, you know, to put people on the spot, that this would be the follow-up stuff. So Lori already said that, so I think that's fine, but that was my, when my hand went up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we know, I agree, we want to call on anyone that wouldn't be fair or appropriate, this is.
I wasn't like looking for an answer, were you calling me for point of order? Because I wasn't like.
Just that we were in this time of like follow-up information.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, I'm not looking for anything right this second, I'm sorry if I wasn't.
No, no, I agree, you were, you were, request for information.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, thanks.
Um, any other requests for information? I think seeing that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? All in favor, say aye. And it's unanimous, everyone have a wonderful evening, thank you, everyone out there in Zoom land.